Agenda items. And the policy amendment that I'm holding is policy on council member agenda additions. Does this specify through the whole agenda, agenda items? And again, while I understand one may need a little bit of clarity, but to ask somebody to write two to three sentences, and then if you, you don't understand it, is gonna be pulled. I might as well, when I put my agenda items, go ahead and do a whole synopsis and introduction and where is this happening anywhere else? Where you have to submit two to three sentences? And then if that is not okay, it's pulled. Can somebody please help me with that? And I'm not trying to be difficult. I want to know what to do moving forward. Because if I provide two to three sentences, and y'all want more information, and you deem it not clear, then, then I can't speak for what, I can't speak to my representation?
If I could say just from an agenda format standpoint, we try to include an abstract with every item. I'm just speaking to above other agenda items. We try to make sure there's an abstract that accompanies almost every item. Presentations, I think we usually try to have an abstract. That's not always possible, but just for conversation purposes, we do try to attach one of them. I'm not suggesting that for this, but I'm just saying that's where information about the item is contained. I'm just mentioning that for everything above other agenda.
And I, and I just say, I think you know what we're trying to get at. It's not that hard. And your items, I think when, I'm just talking to you right now, but I'm saying when you add an item, you know, two to three sentences, Ms. Hawkins, you, you know how to make. And, and you can put, you can express yourself in two to three sentences to get it across. You ain't gotta write a whole book, because you, you know how to, you know how to say it. Oh, and, and that's for any, any of us up here. I mean, two to three sentences, you might not, might not need two to three sentences to express what you're trying to get across to us. And I'm just saying two to three sentences, but you may be able to do it in one sentence. You know?
So when I'm looking at the policy, it, it doesn't, unless I'm, okay. So I don't see where it does say that it would be taken off, or you wouldn't, or we can't talk about the agenda item if there's no clarity, because I'm not sure who would make that distinction to be able to take the person's item off. But what I would say is whenever I have made an agenda item or wanted to add an agenda item, I would simply pick up the phone and call either Assistant Town Manager Bowers or Town Manager Parker, just to give them, if I'm not able to write a synoxis, I will give them the clarity on what I'm speaking about. So at the, as it says here, at the agenda review meeting, then whomever is there will understand and be prepared to talk about whatever agenda item that I have, and also with the staff. So, you know, people won't be caught off guard from what I'm asking. So I haven't really wrote two to three sentences, but I will call, or I may, sometimes I may send an email, or I may just call the person that I have a question about regarding the policy. If it's HR, if it's finance, I may pick up the phone. So if the two to three sentences has, has to replace that, I'm fine with that, but I do understand that clear is kind.
Right. Councilwoman Horrell, I'm going to bring the people by add, or ask that something be added and reach out and write a few sentences. I think that actually you made the recommendation of two to three sentences. And I think that's a good recommendation to give us all clarity.
And, and so what I want to say is, who is regulating what is acceptable to the agenda or not? Who, who, where is the rubric that says, hey, no, that we're not talking about this or not? I mean, so we're adding an item here, but we're not fixing these policies? That's what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Why, how is that?
That is, that is gonna be fixed. The policy, we have been asking for the council to send the manager policies. Chris, correct? Haven't we been asking for that?
For proposed changes.
For proposed changes, right.
With an additional workshop to be set at some point.
So we, we've been asking for this for a long time, but we're gonna make a motion on this immediately. As a, as opposed to us as a council, we're going in closed session, right? As opposed to a council saying, hey, Councilwoman Hawkins and everybody, can you just, you know, do the two to three sentences? And see if that was done. But no, we want to, we want to make a motion to put something in a policy, but we're not doing other things that are even more pertinent to the governance.
So I'd like to make a recommendation that we table it and add it to these, what you're saying, the policies and procedures that you were speaking about, and not take the immediate vote tonight, just in all fairness. If we're going to have a workshop and have the four policies and procedures, we do have closed session, so if we need to talk about how to, you know, assist you with the synoxis and what everyone is looking for as a whole, I think that we can go there. Are we able to do that?
Yeah, just one, I'm, I'm not sure that we would be able to discuss this in closed session.
Okay.
It's not closed session, ma'am.
Okay, well, we can discuss it now.
I'd just like to say that what Councilwoman Dr. Horrell stated, where I usually get all of my information from, if I have any question or concern, if there is any clarity I need to get clear of, we have something on Thursday afternoon called review before we have our regular town meeting. I try my very, very best to attend those meetings so I can get some clarity. That's the reason why you don't see me having anything on the agenda like this, because if I have any kind of concerns or question that citizen has, they want me to ask and get some clarity for them, or even for myself, I have opportunity to answer it during the review meeting. And I know that everybody can't attend, attend that. But I have the opportunity to attend just about everyone that we have on Thursday prior to our regular meeting. That's one of the reasons why I'm being quiet, because my concerns of anything that I have, I can ask that during the review meeting.
So let me just, let me just be clear. As far as the policy means talking about the policy in closed session, let me reiterate that, that's not what I was saying. When Councilwoman Hawkins said, asking her as a person, I guess in closed session or having conversation, that's what I was speaking of. But it seems like, again, as I review the policy, there, there is no indication that what she's speaking about, that someone has the authority to remove her agenda item if they deem that it is not clear. So that is not on?
That's, it's not up here. I just said that.
Right.
I just, I just stated that.
Right.
But I'm reading this as the policy. And I went above that.
Right.
But this is not, this is not stated.
Right.
I'm trying to state this was written here. But I went a little bit further. And I was gonna ask for that, but I don't have to have that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just one, what's here on the, that's written here. Now, I'm, I went a little bit further.
Right.
I was gonna ask that, but, you know, so I'm not, I just went what's here.
Okay, and that makes sense.
So, and, and just for clarity, in no way can, can anyone, I, I, I am speaking about towns business, right? And regulating, that, that shouldn't be. And I know it was said and, and taken back, but I should not be regulated for what to?
You're not regulated.
Okay, can I, can I finish?
You still have?
I, I was speaking.
You still have your chance to put stuff on the agenda. But we're just saying two to three sentences.
Okay, so, and even when this was constructed as a council person, I should have been in, knew that this was being constructed, right? So I didn't know this was being constructed. This wasn't on the review, right? This was amended and put it on and presented to me. And, and I'm gonna assume that other council persons and town manager knew about this. And more than likely, when things are discussed behind the scene, it's gonna be motion. So we're having a motion for this, but not for this. And so my advocacy is for when we sit down with a, with a meeting and go through policy, that it be done in the right manner, as opposed to putting this now. Now, if somebody wants to communicate and say, hey, Councilwoman Hawkins, in the future when you add items, can you please explain a bit further? Then give me the opportunity to say, yes, I will. But to put a, put a policy in place right now, but we didn't put this in, is again, an imbalance of regulations here.
This was discussed in the meeting last week, Thursday. They're discussing procedure for adding agenda items. This was discussed in?
In, in the review?
In the review.
Okay, I wasn't there.
Yes, it wa, it was discussed in.
Yeah, but I wasn't there.
Those of us who were there had the opportunity to talk about it, you know? Just wanted to, to add that to it. That it's not something done behind the scenes or anything like that. This is?
Do we have minutes for the review meeting that can be sent out to council who are not present? Because I was not privy of that. And if we're having a review meeting and we're making decisions, that's going to be pushed forward? And you have council persons who are not present? How, how does that work?
No decisions are made.
No decisions.
The only thing that we do is we discuss the items that are being presented. I remember at one time I asked, asked for something to be removed and consented against it. So the items are discussed, staff explains their, whatever information they have about them. Not saying that they don't do that on Monday night, they do. But if we have questions, this is time that we can ask questions about items on the agenda, get clarification of that. And it is a public meeting, so, you know, it's not a closed meeting.
Being?
And everything, it's not a closed meeting.
Right.
And, and it's informative, you know, and everything. But no, no decisions are made at that meeting. And it may be things that we add because of that meeting. I, I thoroughly, I've gotten a lot of clarification from that. Because I was, I've been an council member who goes through my present before I get there, the packet that we get. I go through it. I have my tablet next door, next to me, because I write down any questions I have about the agenda. I used to present them, email them to a manager, of course, and to whoever else was involved. But since we've had the agenda review, I don't have to do that. Because at that meeting, I can get on, I have my, still have my tab, I still can get my questions answered. And if there's some research that needs to go on, that also can occur, you know, from staff. And they can have it ready to present to us on Monday night. That's one thing I like about it.
Councilwoman Robertson, I still have the question. We have a public notice for a meeting. We have a, a public meeting. Do we have minutes for this review? Or is that isolated from the public? Or, or from the council persons? And then again, I, I feel offended, I'm just gonna be honest, that instead of coming to me and say, hey, can you explain one or two things? That we're putting it in a policy, but we didn't put other things that needed to be changed. It's just, we gonna, this is how I, this is how I translate that. We gonna put a policy in place, and we're gonna make her, we gonna, we gonna pass this motion, and we're gonna make her explain what she's speaking of. And I can, I can explain it, but I will expound from now on, when I'm up here even further. And I will not be regulated on what I'm saying. That's against my constitutional rights. So we can move forward. Again, we should do it properly when we're doing this. We're jumping, we jump for stuff when, when it's to our benefit. But again, a water fountain was out for over a year. We didn't jump for that. Y'all can move forward.
May I clarify the, the structure of the meeting?
Sure.
So that is the manager's meeting. We did advertise it just because the opportunity exists for all council members to be in the room at the same time. But it's not a council. As it stands currently, there are no minutes. But if there are requests in the future for additions to the agenda, we could certainly send that out to the whole council.
Yes, and, and I thank you for that. And I am asking for that. I don't know if we need a motion. But it is a town manager agenda review meeting that is open to the public, is a public meeting. And if councilor not there, they need to have documentation of what was reviewed.
Well, the entire agenda will be reviewed, but I'll be happy to send out any additions that are requested for the agenda.
Thank you.
Again, I put it out here, procedure for adding agenda items, policy on council members' agenda addition. So I put this out here, you can either table it, you can say you want it, or whatever. This is what I put out here. I make a motion that we table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman Moy, second by Dr. Brenda Horrell. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Take into account when we are available to meet. We had something that was supposed to come up, what, last week or the week before that? And we had to, and in order to get a date that we all could meet, the meeting is the end of September. So I think that we need to take that into account too. When we're looking at anything, is that when can we meet? When, what dates are available for us to meet on things? I wish that we could do things a little quicker, a lot quicker than what we are. But it takes us so long to meet on something.
May I ask for clarity on the motion? Is that tabled to a specific time, or just table indefinitely?
Johnny, you, you made a motion, or how, how you want it?
I think we need to, my, 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 my motion was to table it until we get some clarity, make sure that everybody's had full, have a understanding on what they are voting upon.
Still didn't answer the question.
The question is, you said when?
Yeah.
Until we meet, until we meet as a board to discuss this, this policy, and that we all have a clarity, have a understanding. And then we bring it back and have a vote upon it.
Okay. Good.
Got it.
Answered that. So we got a motion and a second. If you want to vote, use your clicker. A motion carried three, two with Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Robertson voting no. Thank you. And then we'll move on to items for future agenda, future work sessions.
Thank you. These are the same items that I had listed last month. The town strategic plan, amendments to the code of ordinances, slash council rules and procedures, that should say probably rules of procedures, and accessory dwelling units. I reported in the agenda review meeting that these are workshops that we've discussed previously and need to set dates for. And if the council doesn't see any issue with it, I'd like to keep these up here under items for future agendas and work sessions, certainly along with any others that we add until we get, until we get dates set.
Yeah, there is something else, let's see here.
Just as sort of a reminder list of, of the things we talk about.
A future agenda, I think is paired it. Hold on, just bear with me for a second.
And upon such time as council, while the mayor's looking, look at their calendars and make a determination of a time of the year, or when we'd like to try to set some dates, we can do that at any regular meeting.
I would like to bring in someone for board training. Board training proposal, you know, have someone come in on Friday evening, go into a Saturday morning for board training. And maybe it be through the league or through North Carolina League of Conservative Voting. They're willing to come in and train, train us, like come in on a Friday and finish it, finish it up on a Saturday morning.
I'll reach out if, if council agrees this is something you'd like to look at. I can.
Or either through the school of government, either one of the two.
I can reach out.
Right.
Is this, is this freeable to everyone?
Mayor, when you say, I have a question. You said board training, training us on?
Ethics, everything, all the way down to line, just full board training. I mean, civility, isn't that right? How you say the word?
Yes, that's.
Civility.
Civility, right.
So a board train, a two-day board training?
Yes.
I, I would imagine some topics.
Is there something written about this, or? I mean, I understand what you're saying. But typically, if you're having a two-day training, they are expounding on what we're gonna be trained on.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. If we could talk to someone and bring it back before we set anything of?
Okay.
You were asking me about work session. And that's why I was saying we need a session on that. So we would have to contact someone, see what they're gonna present to us. You see what I'm saying?
I'll get some options.
Sure.
What's included in those options.
What's included, right. It may not be enough, but maybe do it all on a Saturday morning. You know what I'm saying? But I'm saying Friday and Saturday, right? It may be something that could be done one day, but line two days to get it done. Okay? All right. The announcements, see the attachment done? You got any highlights on the announcements?
I'm real. There are fairly typical ones as we normally have. And since we do have a closed session, just draw everyone's attention.
And you know, we do have a concert in the park Friday night. Next, the reports start going in, Councilwoman.
Oh, okay, so I think I've said a lot this evening. But as I say all of the time, the people are at the top of the organization. The people have entrusted me to speak on their behalf, and I am honored to do so and will continue to. As we are in September, as shared earlier, school is now in its third week, students are getting settled, and we're feeling great about Pitt County's overall growth in achievement. We are on the heels of September 11th. And when tragedies of this sort occur, the country typically, you know, comes together and we, we're, we're together. We don't want outsiders hurting us. I believe that we need to resonate that inside of a town as well. And then going back to liberty and justice for all, but at all times. And also, I want to thank the staff that is responsive to the things that I send out to them, Mr. McGuffin, Mr. Ron Mills, Assistant Town Manager Bowers. I truly do appreciate you all. You're always very responsive. It means a lot because when, when I share things with you, it's not my concerns, it is the people's. And you respond in a professional manner, and I really, truly do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Horrell.
Just want to say thank you to the citizens of Winterville for your support. Everyone did an amazing job that have students or care, or that are caregivers, getting their students to school, wishing everyone a successful year. Thank you to the staff, all of the staff. Thank you to this council, and that's it? Thank you.
Counselwoman.
First of all, I'd like to give honor to God for allowing us to have some beautiful wealth for the water management. That's long, headed this way, he turned it around, and we had a great, great turnout. Not only participation with the citizen, I think everybody was safe and really enjoyed themselves. And a shout goes out to everyone that was involved, every department, to the visiting municipalities that helped keep us safe, to everyone. I just want to say thank you.
Counselwoman Robertson.
I echo everything that Mayor Protan, Mayor, yeah, Mayor Protan, Moy said. Everything was wonderful during the festival. I do want to make sure that everyone knows that 9/11, they remember us. We had it here, we also did it here, green lamp. It will be at Pitt this Thursday at 1:00 in the Smith Building. And you remember, it was a good observance and a way of showing a tribute to those who lost their lives in our country. It's a day that we all remember where we were and what we were doing.
Councilwoman.
Yes, I would just add that not only should we come together in unity, go to our houses, houses of worship, thank our first responders and others on 9/11 or other such tragic events, but we should come together each day to honor and respect one another, treat each other with love and kindness, and as always, give glory to God.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have one matter. I've placed at your seats a document I prepared as a satisfactorily security instrument by secured creditor. This relates to the January 2016 deed to trust from Christ Covenant School to the town. I was informed recently that Christ Covenant School has made its last payment to the town, so therefore it's time to cancel the deed to trust at the Register of Deeds office. This is the document by which you do that. And so I'm, I'm glad to answer any question you have of me, but ultimately, we'd just like to have council approval for the mayor to sign this document, and it would be recorded at the Register of Deeds office.
Motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that we allow the, our mayor to sign documentation for the farmer?
I'm sorry, for, for the, for the cancellation of the deed to trust?
For the cancellation of the deed to trust.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, motion made by Councilman Moy, Mayor Protan Moy, second by-
by Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell, for the mayor to sign the document, the cancellation of the deed of, deed of trust, right?
Yes, sir.
Deed of trust, all right, any discussion?
I know Evan's working on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
On the slide.
And King, you can go ahead and talk about it.
I was gonna say, the only other thing I have is, of course, I think Don mentioned it, we've got a closed session tonight, the statute is referenced here, I think it's to, for the council to give guidance to the staff on the possible purchase or negotiating of, for real estate, other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Now, you can, now you can vote. No, 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 no. Okay, that's all right. I'd be, I'd be called worse. Quick draw, and now you don't want to vote. All right, all right. Johnny? Uh, motion carried, now, Town Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, be brief, if I could ask Ron Mills to come up to the podium, he's not expecting this, so he's giving me the look, I realize that, I don't think we have officially made this announcement, so let me be honored to do so this evening. Mr. Mills is your permanent electric director for the town, and so we would like to make that official announcement, he's been in this role a little bit, but would just like to congratulate him and recognize him as such. Congratulations. Also, I would like to thank staff and all of the volunteers for the Watermelon Festival, I understand it was a great event, and appreciate the hard work that everybody put in for that. And I had one more thing, but it slipped my mind, oh, I did want to mention that the conference room table, when we go into closed session, has a plethora of computer pieces and parts on it, I would ask council to just please bear with us, let's meet around it, we are in the process of changing out some computers, so that's the, the room they're working in, and with that said, that's it.
All right, and for my closing, first of all, thank you Commissioner Smith for being here with us, appreciate you being out there, and also to Mr. Hamid, that's on our Vision Zero Task Force with us, thank you also, and thank you for the invocation tonight, and just remember, Winnebago starts with a W, ends with a E, and it's we, there's no I, and as a coach, as myself, for 18 years, that's what I taught, is we are team, and you know, we're gonna, we're gonna fuss, we're gonna grumble, but we're gonna do what we need to do to move the ball forward, or score a basket, or get to a base, and there's no difference up here on this dial, you know, we ain't always gonna agree on everything, but we're gonna have the best interest of the town of Winnebago before us, so with that being said, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Robinson, to go into closed session, use your clicker, and... Motion carried, take a five-minute bathroom break right quick.
Think we've got anything?
Good night, yes, sir.
Hey, Sarah, how you doing?
Thanks for the shirts.
Right side shirt please.
I need your shirt.
Try to be creative.
So, when I went on the first day, I had not had a chance to get my shirt. So when she came, she had extra shirt. And so I made sure that my other counsel had a shirt and I just threw you a shirt.
Okay.
Okay? Because Luther.
Okay. So I'm going to Luther and I have to get my shirt.
But I just want to make, let you know that, yeah, I would get, because she said, yeah. But she had only brought me.
A motion to go back into open session. So move.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell, second by Councilwoman Lisa Spill, end of discussion. Please vote on clicker, please. Motion carried. May I have a motion? To adjourn.
No, still adjourn.
Motion made by Dr. Brandon Harrell, second by Mayor Pro Tim Moehl. End of discussion. Please use your clicker. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.